Call to order, the fourth regularly scheduled city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Present. Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present. Counsel LaPia.
Present.
Present. Counsel Lozey.
Present.
Present. Counsel Annett. Absent. Counsel Trahan.
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh.
Present.
Present. Ten present.
If we could all stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could keep in our memories the passing of Maria Nikoukolopoulos, who's the mother of Tasso Nikoukolopoulos, the owner of John's Roast Beef, who just passed, I believe, last night, as well as a young person, Cheryl Kelly, who had passed over the weekend. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with every and justicous law.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the...
Yes, you do. Second.
Motion has been made to accept the minutes and seconded. All those in favor say aye, opposed, no. The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, communications.
We have two communications. The first one is, dear counselors, I'm hereby appointing Mr. Richard Starbitt to the Economic Development Industrial Corporation Board. Mr. Starbitt's term is effective immediately and will expire on June 30th, 2018. Sincerely, Judith Flannick and Kennedy Mayor.
I'll make a motion to accept.
A motion has been made to accept and seconded. I believe Mr. Starbitt is in the audience here today. If you'd like to come up and say a few words.
With so much great things going on in the city, things are really starting to pop here. I'm really looking forward to getting involved with the Economic Development Industrial Corporation. I appreciate your confidence and the mayor's confidence and can't wait to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Committeeman Starbitt, for continuing your service for the City of Lynn. What is the wish of the counsel on the motion made from Counsel Trahan and seconded by Counsel Assia? Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Assia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annett. Absent. Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
Next communication.
Dear counselors, I'm hereby appointing Ms. Judith Lewin Callahan to the Lynn Municipal Finance Corporation to replace expired member Lisa Carbona. Ms. Lewin Callahan's term is effective immediately and will expire on September 1st, 2018.
What's the wish of the counsel made and seconded to approve if Ms. Judith Lewin Callahan would like to come up, if she's here present today? If not, that's okay. Presence is not required.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call and approval.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Assia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel LaPia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annett. Absent. Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
Now, we're going to do the induction of the 2016 Lynn Youth Council. We have some really talented young men and women here tonight with us, ready to start their service to the City of Lynn. We thank you very much for that. And what we're going to do is, we're going to announce you, if you'd like to come up here, one by one, and accept our counsel citations, as well as form a line. We'll take a picture and then you will start your service. And we have with us today, Wanthana Sim Chenmani. She is not a student, although she is young enough to be a student, but she is the director of the Lynn Youth Council. So with that, I think we believe we're going to start with the inductions. And our first young woman is going to be a counselor-at-large, and she is a Ward Seven resident, and it's Caroline McDonald. Next is another counselor-at-large, who hails from Ward Five, Amelia Ferres. Another counselor-at-large, hailing from Ward Five, Taima Walker. Another counselor-at-large, who's unable to be here tonight, but it's Christopher Garcia from Ward Six. From Ward Four, we have Jalina Chigon. From Ward Six, we have Ashley Robles. From Ward Three, Newtue Brent.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take the time to congratulate our Lynn Youth Council members 2016. This is the first year we've had the youngest group of council members. Most of them are primarily in eighth grade, getting ready for high school, so we really applaud you all and our present council-at-large members for donating and designating their time to be a voice in the city for their youth. So, thank you, everyone.
And at this point, Madam Clerk, if you could give the oath of office to all our new members...
Could everybody please raise their right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Lynn City Charter.
The Lynn City Charter.
As a member of
As a member of.
The Lynn Youth Council
The Lynn Youth Council.
During my term
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities
Discharge the responsibilities.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
Of the office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We'll have a brief recess, so folks can come up and take pictures if they'd like. And you don't have to, you can come actually, if you want to come into the council kind of dome here, you're more than welcome to come in and get a good shot. We're going to continue with, we're going to continue on with our agenda. Unfortunately, it appears that our audio is not working for our folks at home. In the TV, however, at least our mics are on here. Madam Clerk, what is our next item of agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a joint meeting of the Committee on Public Safety and Public Health and the Lynn City Council. An update on the heroin issues in the City of Lynn by Chief Kevin Carpenter and Chief James McDonald and Health Director Marion O'Connor. Project Cope Director Mark Kennard will conduct a Narcan training session.
Obviously, everyone in our community and folks in the media have been shedding light on the opioid epidemic, not only just here in the City of Lynn, but in our Commonwealth and in our nation. And we have heard from many of our counselors who have had issues in their wards and with neighbors and residents about the issues around the opioid addiction. So we thought, as a collective body, would be important, would be to educate some of our folks at home and folks in the audience about what's going on in the city and in this country, and as well as a tutorial from Mark Kennard at Project Cope for the life-saving training of the administering of Narcan. We'd like to call up Police Chief Carpenter first to give us a little bit of background of what's happening in law enforcement and in the city regarding this important issue. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, President Cahill. Before I give you the update that you've requested, I just would like to say to the council, congratulations. What you're doing tonight is a good thing. Narcan is a wonder drug, in my opinion. It saves lives. I'll be honest with you, several years ago, when it was first came out and there were people who would be trained how to use it on the street, I had reservations about it. I thought it could enable, you know, drug users to use more heroin. And there is some argument to that, but I got to say, it's far outweighed by its life-saving capabilities. I stand here before you, and there's some of my peers, including Mark Kennard, my colleagues in the fire department and some of the other folks, who have seen it work in the field, and it literally brings people back from the dead. So I congratulate you for being leaders of our city and leading by example by taking this training tonight. And I hope you never have to use it, because we never want to see anybody in that condition. But if you have, if you come across somebody in that condition, you'll know how to save a life, and it is a good feeling. So, having said that, I left a package, a packet in each of your positions there, as far as the status of the heroin here in the City of Lynn, as the council president just mentioned, and I think everybody knows at home and in the audience here, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and much of the country has been an opioid epidemic for several years now. If you look at the single sheet, that's titled "Heroin Overdoses: Monthly Comparison," you'll see our history. As I think many of you know, we've been tracking this for over 20 years, the overdoses, and in the last three years particularly, it's skyrocketed. If you just, for the sake of time here, if you just go down to the bottoms, the row that says "Total," these are total overdoses in the City of Lynn that we investigate, and we do investigate every single one that we know about. And I'll put that in quotations, because if somebody overdoses and goes to the hospital, we don't know about it. If they're treated in the street, or 911 is called, or EMS is called, we know about it, and we track it, and we try to follow it up, obviously, for a number of reasons. Number one, to help save the life. Number two, hopefully get that person to treatment or rehab, to get them back on the straight and narrow. And number three is to get the person who sold them that heroin, so we can get the heroin off the street, so we don't have further victims. So anyway, if you just quickly pay attention to the bottom of the year 2012, these are the total overdoses in our city, again, that we knew of. We had a total of 118 overdoses with 24 deaths. Move over to 2013, that number of total overdoses jumped to 195, with again, 24 deaths. 2014, it skyrocketed. A total of 290 overdoses with 46 dead. And last year, it skyrocketed again. 336 people overdosed in the City of Lynn. Now, the sheet in front of you says 38, but I just had a conversation with Marion O'Connor, and she confirmed we're now up to 40. I'll tell you right now, that 40 will increase over the next several months. It's based on toxicology reports we have to get by the medical examiner's office. Once they come in and they confirm there was opiates in the system, that number will go up. Despite all the good that's been being done in the City of Lynn and in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, this epidemic continues to thrive, and it's not good. Moving along quickly, the other packet I left you that says, has the Lynn Police heading on it, this is a summary of our investigations. For the people in the audience and the people at home, there are no, there is no personal information in here. There's no names and date of birth. These are just anonymous people, but a quick summary of every overdose. And just, if you real, just quickly, just pay attention to the front page, the headings. As I just mentioned to you, 336 overdoses in Lynn last year. Narcan was used 217 times. Think about it for a minute. We had 40 dead. Could that have been 257 dead if we didn't have Narcan? I would bet, might not have been that total one, but it would have been damn close, and that's scary. You might ask, who's using Narcan? I'm, excuse me, who's using heroin? You know, and I'll tell you right now, as a police officer with 33 years of experience, it's all across the region. It's all across, you know, demographics. The most common person we see is a white male, probably in his mid-30s, all right? But, and I can't give you specifics of what I've seen as a police officer, but again, some of the folks in the back, it might be in the background here with me, who have been in the business, will confirm this, but it's all walks of life. A lot of people think these are the hardcore street addicts that are down and in the gutter. Yeah, there's some of them there. But there's also the three-piece suits, the soccer moms, you know, the business, you know, professional people. Just a quick anecdote for a second. As you know, we have a Behavioral Health Unit within the Lynn Police Department that's funded by a state grant. And by the way, that grant expires June 30th, so I am looking for money to keep them on board. So if we want to start a bake sale, I would be very much appreciative of your efforts. But seriously, though, I, you know, as a police officer, I look at crime, and it goes up and down, and I look at the overdoses. And you would think, the more heroin on the street, the more people have to steal or rob or break into houses to fill their habits. That's not happening. Crime has been down, but as you see, the overdoses are through the roof. So I had a meeting with the Behavioral Health Unit last, right around the Christmas holidays, and I asked that question, why? And one of the responses was from one of the, Tito Rodriguez, who's one of our civilian caseworkers, said, "Chief, we fall upon every single overdose. We call them, we make some effort to get them into treatment and get them some help." He said, "I'm amazed now, when I call the people and to check on them the day after the overdose, I get, I can't speak to you right now, I'm at work." To me, that is very scary. There's people in our workplace who are using heroin. They could be managing your 401K, they could be managing your healthcare, they could be working in City Hall, they could be working in the police or a fire department, they could be working anywhere. But, and these are the folks that are, they could be driving our school buses, we don't know. One thing quickly, if you just go back to that packet with the overdoses and look towards the second to last page, and I'm going to try and do my best to defend the good old City of Lynn, which I love, but it's not just Lynn people. As you know, some folks, and I'll say it from the podium here, some people say, "This is just a Lynn problem," or "It's a Lowell problem," or "A Boston problem." I'm going to tell you right now, it is not. Look at the list of places of residence where people come, that have overdosed in our city, and you'll see it. I'm just picking a few of them out. Brunswick, Maine, Cambridge, Dorchester, East Boston, Georgetown, Gloucester, Hampton Falls, New Hampshire, Hyannis, Maine, Malden, Methuen, Nashua, New Hampshire, Newburyport, Providence, Rhode Island. It goes on and on and on. So those that say, "It's not my problem," this is everywhere in the Commonwealth, this is every walk of life, as I said. But going back to the point of what you're doing tonight, again, I congratulate you. Narcan does work, you know, and the training's not very difficult. I'm an instructor myself. All our police officers were trained last year. I know the firefighters are all trained, and I know you're going to hear some more statistics on how much we've used and how it works. But in closing, I just want to say, congratulations. I think this is a wonderful thing you're doing. And again, I'm proud to stand here in front of you and watch you lead, but lead us by example, because this is a good thing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, for your service and for your men as well, and your women. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could next have Chief Jim McDonald come to the mic. Chief, what are some of the things that your men and women are seeing on the streets?
On a daily basis, we're seeing overdoses all over the city, not just in certain sections. They're in motor vehicles, they're at traffic lights, they're pulling up on the firehouse ramp for service, they're in men's rooms in fast food restaurants, they're in Walmart, they're in just about every place that is a public building, these people have access to. So it's not in any given, in any one particular spot or demographic, like the police chief has already said, and I like following the police chief, because our information is redundant. It's everywhere. It's male, female, no racial lines, no particular spots in the city, it's all over the place. I have with me the captain, who's the director of the EMS unit. Joe handles all of our paramedics and our EMTs. He is in charge of the Narcan grant, along with the police. He compiles all the statistics for us, all the money we've spent, all the times we've used the product. And when he comes up and gives you those statistics, they're pretty much mirror of the police. They're not exact, because like Kevin pointed out, sometimes we don't see the same people he does. So when he comes up, he'll be able to give you direct answers as to the amount of product that we use, how we use it, the two types that we use, and the effect. And sometimes they don't work. There are occasions where we'll go three or four treatments to a patient, and it's just over. The patient's dead. So we have our successes that are probably outnumbering the failures, but the failures are tough. So, but he'll outline that for you, if you don't mind me bringing him in.
Thank you, Chief. Joe Zoukis, if you could join us.
We appreciate you giving your time tonight. Oh, thank you. I'm not going to repeat what the police and fire chief said, but I'll just go with some stats for Lynn Fire. Thanks to the Lynn Police included us in the grant, we always had the Narcan on our paramedic truck and all the ambulances in the city, including Atlantic Ambulance and Lynn Fire's Medic One, have had Narcan. But since April of last year, we were included with the grant with the police department. And this is what the nasal Narcan looks like right here. Now it's on every fire truck in the city, every engine and every ladder truck. So last year, this is a pretty good number, I want to go, our numbers reflect what the police chief said, but we saved 93% of the people we gave it to on the fire trucks last year, and that's a pretty good number. So, there's only 7% of the time that we gave it, that it was not successful. That's due no fault of the men and women in the fire department, we just, by the time we get the phone call, the person was already, sad to say, passed away. But, so, it's a great miracle drug that's out there, and there's also a form out there, this is an auto-injector. It's much more expensive. This is about $20, this is a couple hundred dollars, but there's two ways to get it. We got it through the grant, and we've used both out there very successfully. So I just want to say, I think this program is great, hopefully expand it, and you guys all get trained, men and women get trained here tonight. I think that's great. You know, the more lives we save, you know, I think it's a great thing. So it's a great program, I hope it continues, and I hope we find an answer to this epidemic out there. So, thank you.
Thank you for your service. At this point, I believe we'd like to have our Health Director, Marion O'Connor, whose eyes and ears on the ground on behalf of the City of Lynn.
Good evening, and thank you for having me, and thank you for doing this tonight. I have to tell you, this is probably the most frustrating public health problem we're dealing with in the city. We lost over 40 lives last year. If we lost over 40 lives to the flu, the police would be going crazy. We've been working on this for years, and it's so frustrating to see the numbers continue to rise. Our best defense, and it's not, it's not the answer to the opioid epidemic, but it's our best defense to keep people alive, keep them alive long enough, so hopefully they live long enough and are willing to make that change, is Narcan. Nobody's saying it's going to cure the epidemic, but it's our way, our best chance of keeping these people alive in order that we can do so. You're going to hear from Mary Wheeler tonight, who's going to show you how Narcan is used. Mary was just at our Board of Health meeting and talked to us, and we heard the numbers from the police and the fire, and she works on the ground in the city, and she knows that those numbers are probably 50% short of what's really going on out there, of the folks who get the Narcan and never, never receive services from the hospital and 911. So we are facing a battle here, and I appreciate what you're doing, and I hope you set a good example for all. And the more Narcan that we can get out there, the better. We want to get it in as many people's hands as possible, and Mary can tell you how to do that as well. We have Narcan now here in City Hall. We're a public building, we have the auditorium, we have shows, so there is Narcan available, and our employees are trained within City Hall now as well. So, and we're working to get it in the school department, so that every school will have a Narcan kit as well. So, thank you again, and I'll let you get to your training.
Thank you, Marion. Thank you very much. If Mark Kennard from Project Cope can come up, I believe he will be our training instructor for the evening.
Good evening. I just want to say a couple of quick things. One is, I made this request in writing to President Cahill less than a month ago, to have us come, Mary and her staff come and provide a training, a brief training on the use of Narcan. And the response was overwhelmingly quick and to the point, yes, come, it's important. And I think it really epitomizes what this city has done in terms of coming together to really combat this terrible, terrible opioid epidemic. And I've worked in the city, in the treatment sector at Project Cope, for over 35 years, and I have never seen anything quite like this. There have been some good. The stigma of addiction, I think, is changing, as people understand that addiction is really, it's a terrible and deadly brain disease that victimizes not only the addicts, but their family and their friends and people around them. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the efforts of the Lynn Police Department and the Lynn Fire Department. These are officers who literally have saved hundreds and hundreds of lives over the last few years using Narcan. This isn't why they signed up to be police or firemen. They signed up for public safety, and this is much of what they do now, and they do a wonderful job professionally, with compassion, and they really are a huge credit to the city. And I want to acknowledge all of the work from both Kevin and Jim. So just quickly, in terms of, before I introduce Mary, in terms of help, treatment does work. It is available. It often takes time. Relapse is part of treatment. We are here, we've been working in Lynn now for almost 50 years. The state helpline, if you're looking for help, for treatment help, is 1-800-327-5050. If you have any questions, and sometimes the treatment system is very, very difficult to navigate and to understand, I'm going to also leave you with my personal number, which is 781-581-9270. Call me and I will help you. And that's really why we're all here. It really does work. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mary Wheeler and Danny Marston from Healthy Streets. Mary has worked on the streets of Lynn doing harm reduction, saving lives for the past 11 years. They are going to take the next 15 minutes and train each of you, and President Cahill, you may want to come down to the front here, so Mary can kind of look this way.
I was going to pretend I was the patient, but I will...
Well, that could be another... So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mary to come forward and do her training.
Thank you very much.
[applause] [inaudible] Yeah, that's okay. And... [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
I'm actually gonna put it over here. Alright. Can everybody hear me? Is that good? Alright. So, my name is Mary, and I work for Healthy Streets. Thank you so much for having us tonight. It's really exciting. I'm a little bit nervous. It's not my usual element. And this is Danny Marston, born and raised in Lynn, Mass., and now works for us as a health educator. He's been with our program for about six years, giving back to his city. So, I'm gonna talk to you about Narcan. Sometimes I say naloxone. Narcan and naloxone are the same drug. I just use the words interchangeably. And I'm gonna try and make this as brief as possible. So, this is weird. Okay. So, Narcan, the medication itself, right, like the chief said, is a miracle drug. The way that it works is in our brain. We have opioid receptors. We do an opioid, goes to our brain, hits those receptors. We do too much, and it tells us to stop breathing. The second thing that stops is our brain function. Brain function starts to slow, brain death happens, and then our heart is the last thing to stop when we're overdosing on an opiate. Narcan gets given to the body, goes into the brain, kicks off the opioid off of those receptors for 20 to 90 minutes, and covers them up like a little hat. So, the drug is still there, floating around in the brain. It just can't work for 20 to 90 minutes, right, which in turn, (sigh) brings somebody up out of their overdose is the hope, right? Downside of Narcan, it only works for opioids, right? So heroin, fentanyl, methadone, Dilaudid, Demerol, hydrocodone, oxycodone, that whole class of painkillers. It does not work for things like benzodiazepines or alcohol or cocaine. But when in doubt, you can give Narcan. It's never gonna hurt anybody, which is the upside. Any of the council members ever seen an overdose? Seen one?
Nope, just the results.
Yeah. So, on average, if we averaged out death in Massachusetts, we lose about four people a day to fatal overdose. That's a lot of people. When we are in a situation with folks who are at high risk for overdose, these are folks coming out of treatment, coming out of jail, using a loan, people who've overdosed before are more likely to overdose again. Folks who are mixing their drugs together, there's a lot of overdose risk factors for them. If we come across somebody who's under the influence of drugs, they might look tired. They might look like they're actually sleeping. You might hear labored breathing. Any of those kind of, they might be nodding out, right? Somebody in a nod is not an overdose. They can hear you. You can say to someone in a nod, "Hey, are you alright?" And they'll respond to you. The problem comes when they're not responsive, when they're pale, clammy, turning blue, their lips are blue, their face is turning blue, maybe their eyes might be rolling back in their head. Sometimes they've seen overdoses where people are looking at you and starting to turn blue. They can't speak. They might have labored breathing,[802.79][802.79](sigh) or they might be gurgling in the back of their throat. All of those are really serious warning signs that something is wrong. Our training, the first thing you do after the "hey, are you alright?", the second thing is a sternal rub, right? I know we always go right for the Narcan. Narcan is actually the last thing we train people to do. There's a couple really important steps before administering the medication that are really important. Number one, the sternal rub. We wanna see if the person is completely out. We primarily train folks that are drug users. We are a DPH pilot site, so that is our focus, is people who are using. They're usually the ones on the scene, as well as their families or loved ones. So, that takes the place of what some folks in the street might do that might not work. Ice, cold showers, things that will actually speed up the overdose, giving them a drug. That's the opposite of a downer, giving someone an upper. All these things, we don't wanna do any of those when somebody is overdosing. The sternal rub brings me out (sigh) and I wake up. I'm not okay. I still need a 911 call. Once I've turned blue or gone unresponsive at all, I have to go to the hospital. If I don't respond to the sternal rub, you know that I am out. My next step is 911. Historically, we used to say on the phone, say not breathing, unresponsive, respiratory arrest. Now we're really trying to push people to say it's an opiate overdose. Because what happens is, when your first responder team shows up, everybody on the scene is prepared. They don't have to run back to the car. They don't have to grab a different bag, right? And with somebody who's not breathing, they might be overdosing on an opiate. They might be overdosing on heroin. This is where we are, right? Then you wanna get EMS on the way, right? At that point, if you're comfortable, you assess the situation. Are you gonna do rescue breathing for this person? Because that is the most important part of this intervention, is the rescue breathing, right? You wanna lay the individual as flat as you can on their back. If you have a breathing mask, that's great. A lot of people don't walk around with them. Even people that do walk around with them, sometimes fumble with them if they're not used to using them. If you know you're not gonna do rescue breathing for this person, please put them on their side, in the recovery position, which I normally show people, but I'm not gonna do that in Lynn City Hall. Basically, on their side, right? In case I start to vomit, I take a seizure, I start foaming at the mouth, any of those things happen, I'm not going to choke, and you still have access to my nose in order to give me the Narcan. If you are going to do the rescue breathing, worst-case scenario, you can pull the person's shirt up over their face and breathe through their shirt. Breathing mask, again, is great. Sometimes people take their Narcan bag and put a hole in it and use it as a barrier. Not everybody's gonna be thinking that clearly. So, rescue breathing. Hand on the forehead, two fingers under the chin, tilt the head back, we pinch their nose, we open their mouth if we can. Sometimes people, when they begin to overdose, their body ends up clenching up really bad. Their jaw clenches shut, their fists clenched tight. Never try and open someone's mouth, ever, right? Put them on their side and give them medication. But if we're all good, we're gonna do the rescue breathing, we're gonna do that head tilt, pinch their nose, open the mouth. If you have a barrier, great. If not, and you're gonna put your mouth on theirs, go for it. Two small breaths. (sigh) Make sure their chest is rising, not their belly. If their chest is not rising, put their head back, retilt, and start over. If you see anything in their mouth and you're not a first responder, don't dig for it, right? We wanna put them on their side, again, right? We don't wanna make this problem worse. If everything is going okay for me, within reason, two small breaths, and my hands off, and I'm gonna count to five. I'm gonna do that three or four times. One breath, (sigh) count to five. The breath of life, right?[1046.24][1046.24](sigh) Three, four, five. Then I'm gonna grab my medication. Comes like this, or it comes like this, right? Some people have access to the auto-injector. They are about $600, but they do talk to you.
This trainer contains no needle or drug. To inject, please.
Counts for you, right? If you have this, that's great.
Injection complete.
Not much to it.
This trainer may be reserved for training purposes. Replace the red safety.
Thank you. We're gonna give you guys nasal Narcan kits. They're a little bit different. You have to put them together. Comes like this. You open up the box in this little baggie and you get three pieces, right? Looks like this. You take your plastic piece, yellow comes off and yellow comes off, right? Two caps pop right off. This is what makes it a nasal spray, right? Everything is threaded, it twists together. You put the atomizer on the end. Working with, learned to cope parents for about nine years now, teaching them how to do Narcan, the moms always have told us, tell people to put it together like this, because when we try and save our kids, it's hard to get together because we're shaking. So if you have the kit and you keep it like this, it fits perfectly back inside of the box, right? And I can tell you, it is hard to get on if you're nervous. Grab your dose. It's made of glass, right? Don't bite the cap off. If you drop it, it might shatter. Slides in, twist in a half, up the person's nostril. We're gonna spray half up one side, half up the other, till the dose is completely empty. We're gonna start breathing again. One breath, count to five. One breath, count to five. We wanna try and wait two to three minutes. If nothing is happening, we're gonna administer the second dose that we have. At that point, when EMS shows up, or the police show up, or whoever is first, explain to them exactly what you did. I gave one dose, I gave two doses. This is what I think they're on. This is their medication. And any information you have about the person in front of you. If the person starts to wake up, keep telling them, "You overdosed, you overdosed," because they're not gonna know what happened. So they're gonna come out confused. They might be in opioid withdrawal, which is very painful. And they might be swinging, they might be sick, they might vomit. So just kinda back away, give them their space and let them know what happened. This is a temporary medication, 20 to 90 minutes. That person can go back into their overdose once it wears off. They really need medical attention. Your kit does expire, September of 2017. The way the pilot program works is that we give it to you for free. If you use it, lose it, especially if you use it, we wanna take a report back. Everybody that uses our kits, we get a report back from what happened. How much Narcan did you use? Did it work? Did it not work? And then we write a little comment about the scenario. And that's about it. Am I missing anything? The down, dirty Narcan training for you. Anybody have any questions? Yeah.
Hi. I was wondering, is there any particular reason why you have to go to the person completely out before you administer this? And also, should administer before they're completely out? Is there any kind of negative side to that?
I would be really surprised if you could get close to somebody that's not actually in an overdose to Narcan them. If they're conscious, you're probably not gonna be able to give it. It's really only to help aid and to kickstart their breathing again. You, if you give it to somebody who's just under the influence, they go into withdrawal, which could actually increase their risk for another overdose.
So people at home can know, if they wanted to go through this training, where would they go to get the training?
So a couple places. There is a standing order for pharmacy access, so folks can go to Walgreens or CVS Pharmacy, approach the counter at the pharmacy and ask for a Narcan rescue kit. They need an ID, so they need to be 18-plus. Your insurance gets ran. Some people have a copay, some people it's paid for completely. So that's one option. They can come to a pilot site. Ours is in Lynn. We're at 100 Willow Street, or any of the other pilot sites around Massachusetts, and get the medication for free. Obviously, Lynn is gonna be your closest one, but if you look on the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, they have a full list of Narcan pilot programs around the state of Massachusetts where you can access the medication for free.
Just to follow up on Counselor Walsh's question, are pharmacists trained to teach folks who come to the pharmacy as well? Can someone just walk in and say, "Mr. Pharmacist, can you show me as well?", especially in Lynn? And if there are any folks in Lynn that are providing pharmacy services that aren't trained to do that, we would very much like to know that.
So all of the, so the medical director that provides us our standing order is also the medical director that provides the area pharmacies their standing order. So it's, if you run into that problem where you go to the pharmacy and you're kind of doing a controlled buy to see what's what, and they don't know how to train you and they don't know what you're talking about, it's really important that you contact us, and then we call the medical director. But Walgreens and CVS, all their pharmacists should be trained to obviously give the medication, and then train each person how to use it the same way that we do. If they don't, then we need to know about that.
And just, just... The cost varies by copay or insurance, or if you didn't have insurance, what's the ballpark?
So it varies. The injectable, the intramuscular injection is cheaper. The intranasal, sometimes the one dose is $20. So the kit, we've heard the kits out of pocket can range $40 to $80 to $100.
And if there are family members out there, or neighbors, or friends, where do folks get support? Where can they call? Who can they talk to? Are there, you know, NA meetings, AA meetings, or, you know, obviously, family meetings as well? What are some of the resources in Lynn?
So Lynn, there's a lot of AA, a lot of NA meetings. There's Al-Anon meetings, which are for folks that were either raised by individuals that had a drug or alcohol problem. There's Alateen, which are teens who have loved ones that are using drugs and alcohol, primarily parents. Learn to Cope, the closest meeting is in Salem. It's a peer-run family group to get support if you have children or loved ones that are using drugs and alcohol. And they also have a free message board, so if you're not or unable to go to a meeting, you can go online, have the free message board. You can always call us, come see us. We spend a lot of time on the phone with parents. There's a lot of services in Lynn. Suboxone maintenance, methadone maintenance, outpatient treatment, some dual diagnosis programs, Bay Ridge Hospital. So there's a decent amount of resources in the city.
I was wondering if it was possible, through either yourselves or Mr. Kennard, if we could get a list, you know, brochure of suggested treatment facilities, possible steps to prevention, whatever's going on, and the phone numbers that were given out, you know, so the counselors could have them and maybe distribute, if that's something that could be done.
Like a local list?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. You can do that.
How can we wanna put Narcan in the public school system?
Me? So that's not something we're in charge of. I think people wanna be prepared under any circumstances. I... So that's the beauty of Narcan, is that you can't get high off it. There's no benefit to it. The only thing it's good for is to kickstart someone's breathing who's overdosing on an opiate. So if you weren't opioid-dependent and I Narcaned you right now, you would just be really uncomfortable, because I sprayed a bunch of stuff up your nose. Nothing would happen to you. Some people have the fear, like if they have Narcan here, is that gonna give the kids in the school the okay to use drugs? But if the kids are gonna use drugs, they're gonna use drugs regardless of whether there's Narcan in the schools.
Do we do school training for upperclassmen and teachers as well and nurses?
I'm not sure, but I think if you want that, that would be a good youth council thing to discuss.
Is there any way to spot, like, the difference between opioid overdose and a heroin opioid overdose?
So heroin is an opioid. It's okay. It's a lot of different words, I know. So, in terms of looking for somebody who's overdosing on heroin or another opiate, and a different kind of overdose, you might wanna look for things like pinpoint pupils, so their pupils get really, really tiny, their lips are turning blue, they're having a hard time breathing. When in doubt, you can try the sternal rub to wake somebody up and get on the phone to 911 if anybody is compromised like that and can't speak to you. But really, the blue lips, the not breathing, those are the things that we look for for an overdose.
Well, I can speak for our colleagues on how important this has been, and how enlightening it has been, and how great this training has been. And I think, hearing about it, and more people knowing how to administer Narcan, and some of the tips to look for is very important. We've talked about this as a council, but it would be so important also to just have all of our city employees going through a very similar training, because a lot of those folks are in and around our community and our neighborhoods each and every day. And maybe the more folks that know about it, the more lives can be saved as well. So if you wouldn't mind, we could set something up and have more of our public employees in the city trained as well, if that's something you'd be willing to do.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I actually, I also, besides doing this, I work at Seven Deadly Sins as a tattoo artist. And my first week on the job there, we share a local bathroom with all the businesses there in the building on Monroe Street. And the first week on the job, we couldn't get the door open. And luckily, we had, in one of our businesses, there was a side door that was just blocked with a piece of wood. We were able to take the wood off of the door and open up the door, and there was a gentleman overdosing in the bathroom. And me and one of the other tattoo clients that were there at the time ended up stretching him out, working on him. I had Narcan in my bag. We administered the Narcan and were able to save his life. The Lynn Police Department came and took over from there. But it is, it doesn't matter where you are at any point in time, that was pointed out earlier. It's doesn't, it's not just a direct type of person. It can be anywhere and it can affect anyone. Doesn't pick and choose. It's everywhere.
Well, thank you for all you do, and we appreciate you coming down here today. Counselor...
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. I have a quick question on, just to expand on the young lady there. Now, do we have the Narcan in the schools, do the nurses?
Marion.
Yeah, we're in the process of doing that. It's just a formality that a policy has to be in place for the nurses to have in the schools. So not only the school nurses will have it, but they'll... So not only the school nurses will have it, but they'll also be accessible. They have defibrillators in every school. Same place we have the Narcan in City Hall's and the defibrillator. So the, every school that has a defibrillator will have a Narcan kit in there, and there'll be personnel trained from administration, teachers and down, so they'll be in the nurse's office plus. That's our goal.
While we have you up there, Marian, I quickly browsed through the helpful information that Chief Coppinger provided. I don't think there are that many overdoses in our schools, fortunately, and I think.
Yeah, this is not really, there haven't been overdoses in the school, and this isn't for the schools, but schools are publicings as well. So you have sporting events afterwards, you have teacher, you know, parents coming in strange, so that's, that's really, it's not because it's a school problem.
And that's the point I want to make. I think we need, this education needs to go where it'll be used, and people that will ultimately come into contact with the users and, and overdoses. So I think it's a great program, and I want to thank you all for what you're doing and coming together like this. Thank you.
I left you all a little flowery piece of paper on your envelope, so we keep a prayer table at the drop-in center, and it's all obituaries and folks that we've lost to overdose. If you've lost somebody, you're welcome to fill out a little note to them, and you can drop it off at the drop-in center or mail it over, and we put it up on this huge prayer wall for folks that have passed away. So if you're interested, feel free.
And they're all going to get kits, right?
So the kits, we have enough for everybody, but we have to do an enrollment with you.
Oh, okay.
So we, it's anonymous, you do have to give your birthday. But, so I don't know if you wanted to do it, we can just do one by one or wait till after, or it's up to you.
We could continue with the business, and if you wouldn't mind, we could also sign ourselves up to obtain the Narcan, if that's okay with the council? Seeing no objection? Yeah, if that would be, if we could go on with our business as well, and, and actually, actually it'd be nice to take a, a quick break, because our, our young folks here, well, you have to go to school tomorrow. So we'll take a quick, and Jeffrey does too, and we'll take a quick break, a five-minute break, and let you folks gather your things and be able to, to go head home, and we'll sign up for Narcan, and that's a five-minute break.
Clark, if you could read the next public hearing.
Public hearings, we have a public hearing relative to a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building or other structure located at Seventeen South Street Court, Lynn, Massachusetts, and after hearing may make record of an order judging it to be a nuisance to the neighborhood, are dangerous, and prescribing to its disposition, alteration, or regulation, all is authorized by Mass. General Laws, Chapter one thirty-nine, Section one.
Okay, I was going to open the public hearing for all those wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in? Come up, please.
Calvin Anderson, twelve Concord Street. As a member of the Lynn Historical Commission, every time one of these comes up, we try to get out and take a look at the property. Three of our five current members went by this one, and we have no problems with this being torn down. Comments were forlorn, too bad, it's been too long. This is at the end of a dead-end street. The other streets, houses on the street have curb appeal, people have flowers and plantings, et cetera. This is the very end, right by the railroad track that hopefully is going to be a rail trail in the future. But this is a forlorn property. Other members have said it's scary, I'd hate to live next to it, so we concur. This one can go.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, members of the city council, I'm here on behalf of the owner, Seventeen St. South Street Court LLC. Project manager, Todd Bollin, with me here today. We acknowledge it's been a little bit of a long time here for this thing to get going. I'm sorry? In favor. I'm just, no, well, I'm, I'm in support of, on behalf of the owner, what, what our project plan is here. So we're just.
Yeah, so you got to, yeah, so this is, yeah, so you're not in favor of tearing it?
No, we're not in favor.
Okay, so you got to wait till the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak in favor? Hearing no one else wishing to speak in favor, the public hearing for those in favor is now closed. Anybody here in opposition?
Thank you. So basically, we're in the process of renewing the building permit application to tear it down and build a new structure on the property. Plan is to demolish it, build a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath colonial. We're just waiting for the utility companies to sign off on the, on the, that the utilities have been terminated. Finance is in place, this project could be completed by late spring. So, if all goes well with respect to the building department, but the finance is in place, we're ready to go. We do apologize for the delay, but it's our intent to demolish the building and put a new structure up, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else here wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, the meeting is now closed for opposition. What's the wish of the committee? Actually, Counselor Capano.
Yes. Could I have the, the owner or yourself, whoever's representing the owner, to come back up? I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't remember your name. So we, we gave permission a few years ago to, to have the property demolished and then restored. There was going to be, we actually gave permission for a new house to be built.
Right.
And, you know, I know we went through a lengthy process to, to remove a lot of the stuff that was in the yard. There was hoarders living there. I mean, the place was really, really bad. And it's a constant source of complaints from the, from the neighbors there. If I knew for sure that you guys are really going to do this, I mean, I don't have a problem rescinding this or tabling it probably, you know? But I, I would like to know that you were really going to follow through, you know, with doing it.
Well, the issue was with some financing, and the financing now is in place, and the money's ready to go, so it's just a matter of now. And I do have, for instance, the National Grid application to get the utility shut off, so that's the last piece that the building department will be looking for. So we're just looking to renew the permit, and we were just looking at plans on, online as to what kind of housing they're going to put up on the property. So if I, what I'd ask is maybe you table it for six months, and we could probably complete the project by then.
I'd, I'd like to table it for a month, just to know that you followed through, or the National Grid has contact. I will help you get ahold of them if you're waiting for them to get back to you or if there's a problem.
I don't think there's a problem anymore with National Grid, I think we're pretty close with them.
So, and I'd like to meet you guys, you know, maybe next week, next Tuesday night, if you want to come to the council, look at the plans, and you can do that. I, I'm willing to work with you, I don't want to tear the building down.
We appreciate that.
It has an empty lot there. We were willing to do this a couple of years ago, you know? And I was very glad, the neighbors were really glad that that house was going to be torn down and there was going to be a new house there, but it hasn't happened, you know? So I, I'd like to be able to meet you guys, look at it, you know, talk about the schedule for when things would happen, you know? To make sure we would go from one step to the next to try and get this done, you know? Like you say, in the spring, that would be great. So maybe we could schedule an appointment.
Maybe we could schedule a appointment, bring by some plans, we could show you what we have in mind and tell you where we're at with respect to the, the building permit process.
I'd like to table for, make a motion to table this for one month.
Okay, second by Counselor Clucci, roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci? Yes, Counselor Seah? Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey? Absent Counselor Net? Absent Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, nine yes. Next order is.
Thank you, members of the council.
Public hearing relative to an ordinance amending a portion of the zone map of the city of Lynn and zone ordinance of the city of Lynn. And I have the approval of the planning board with an amendment as follows. The areas affected by this zoning amendment shall include all areas delineated on the map presently available for viewing in the city of Lynn Inspection Services Department. Generally, the areas shall include Camden Street, Bates Street, River Street Place, River Street, Heath's Court, River Street Court, Canal Street, Cooper Street, Needham's Landing Road, Margin Street, Avon Street, Wright Street, Redden Street, Reed Street, Dearborn Terrace and Dearborn Avenue. All areas presently zoned as an apartment house class two R four district described above and delineated on the zoning map shall now be designated as a general residence R two district.
Okay, the public hearing is now open for anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing for opposition is now closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor? Anybody here wishing to speak in favor? Anybody here wish to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. What's the wish of the council? Counselor Capano?
Yes. So what we're trying to do here is reduce density in a very congested area of the city where there's proposals to, to build over a hundred units in a very small area where there's no parking. The traffic is ve, is very bad as it is, and we want to change this from an R four to an R two to reduce the density in this particular area. We had a discussion at the planning board, a lot of neighbors came. Most were in support, and the planning board was in support, and I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Second.
Second.
Counselor, is that with the recommendations of the planning board?
Yes.
Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seah?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Present? Yes, Counselor Net? Absent Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh? Absent? Petition is sent to the bank, Barlow Signs for permission for a signed permit at Two State Street.
Okay, the public hearing is now open for those in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Paul Martin, I'm with Barlow Signs. We recently submitted a new drawing, I'm not sure if everybody has seen it yet, but originally we had just a standard pole. We tried to do something with, that puts the elements of the surrounding areas into the sign. The client has intentions of working with the city of Lynn and using this as a public service announcement sign. That's one of the reasons why we were asking for a twenty-five-foot overall height, so that could be seen from the train platform. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that.
Okay, why don't you sit close and we'll, after.
Sure.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Anne Mannion, I'm the manager of the Century Bank branch, and just to echo what Paul said, we, we would like to have the sign twenty feet high, so it would be visible from the street as well as from the railroad or from the train tracks. And, you know, we, we would be willing to partner with the city to use it to display public service and community messaging, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing for those in favor is now closed. Anybody like to speak in opposition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Jeff, Jeffrey, please. We're in a public hearing here, Jeffrey. Anybody here in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing for those, opposition is closed. Counselor Chakoudas? I believe, oh, is it Capano?
Yes. I, I've spoken with the owner, and I, I have the actual sign going around. It's the sign, the only one, the only way you can really tell it's the one that is the same height as the building. Counselor Chakoudas has worked on this quite a bit herself. I think the sign is good. It's going to be on Market Street. This is the Century Bank that's on the corner, there's no sign there. This will be on the Market Street side, and the sign is the same height of the building. So I like the sign, I, Counselor Chakoudas worked on this too, and we spoke to the owner, and I'd like to make a motion to grant this particular sign.
Second by Counselor Clucci. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seah?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net? Absent Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, ten yes. Next petition is petition of A&amp;J Auto Repair Two for a change of use auto repair at eight sixty Weston Avenue.
Okay, public hearing is now open for anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Abdul Wahab Hajj. I'm calling, I'm talking about my, on behalf of my brother, he's leasing the space. He used to be mechanic in Chelsea, and then he, he leases the space right now in, in, in this place in Lynn. And, you know, the place, it looked like to me, I, I see, it's, it used to be, it used to be an auto repair before, back in two years or three years ago.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the public hearing for those in favor is now closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition?
Paul Kreswick, I live at fourteen Murphy Avenue.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
My name's Paul Kreswick, I live at fourteen Murphy Avenue, I'm the owner of the premises. And this premises is located directly behind the repair shop area or the building, as it is not presently. And I have some photos in case. The house is located about twenty-two feet, twenty-three feet away from the, this building. And what I'm concerned about is that in the past, when it was a repair shop years ago, there was a lot of storage of oil-containing materials, usually old motors, transmissions, you name it. And so I'm afraid that if this becomes a repair shop once again, after a hiatus of several years, that this sort of situation will repeat itself. And of course, because the land that the building is located on is higher than my land, and is sort of an abutment there, holding back the land, that if there is an oil spill, it will come onto my land. So I'm not so much opposed to a repair shop going in there, but with, with some kind of stipulations that, that there'd be no storage of either hazardous materials, particularly in the back of the building, which you can see there, would have put my property. So that's why I have an opposition. Also, you know, the usual junk cars, parking problems, noise, you know, those are all issues with a repair shop, so.
Okay, Counselor Seah.
I'd like to ask a question. The picture you're showing us, that's the garage?
On the left is the garage.
The brown garage? Let me see, out back in front of it?
The garage is on the left of that photo, and my house is on the right.
So the garage is your garage?
No. Oh, you mean in back? Oh, yes, that's my garage, down the driveway, yes, yeah.
And there hasn't been a business at this location?
Well, there's been a succession. For years, Jack Plourd had a repair shop there and a used car facility. And then it became a detailing place for a short period of time, but they went out of business, I understand. And that was a kind of a nuisance, because they were, they were washing the cars outside, and the spray was always on my cars and so forth. But at least it was quiet, and they did keep the place neat. And then it became the Academy of Sin, which I, was a gym, which failed after a couple of years. And so that's, so essentially, it's been out of the car repair shop business for, I don't know, probably eight or nine years, something like that.
That's why they're coming back from the council, because it hasn't been a.
It hasn't been.
A shop, and they're asking for.
Change of use.
Permission for us to do that.
Yes, that's, that's it, and.
This the place, Counselor Seah, right next door to Bruno's, the new restaurant?
Bruno's, yes, it's right next to Bruno's.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is anybody else in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed for those in opposition. Counselor Capano?
Yes, I, I spoke to the owner. The owner owns a restaurant next door, and he did have the gym there for a couple of years. It was a detailing place for a while, the gym didn't work out, and he would like to. work out, and he would like to rent it out to this auto repair place. He, the property he does own, he does keep very neat, you know, he, places, and I spoke to him, I didn't talk to him about the hazardous materials, but I, I would, I did tell him that there should be no cars outside, no working on cars outside, no cars parked out on the street.
So you can put those as stipulations?
So I wanted to make those stipulations, because I do sympathize with Mr. Kreswick, where Cool is right next door. It has been a lot quieter and neater there for the last, you know, seven, eight years. So I kind of have a little faith in the, in the owner of the property, based on the way he kept the gym there and the way he keeps his other properties, including the restaurants. So I would make a motion to grant with the stipulation that there'll be no hazardous chemicals stored in the garage, that there'd be no working on cars out on the, in the parking lot outside, all work to be done on the vehicles will be done inside the garage, and that they would have to follow all terms and conditions of the building department and I S D.
Second. Okay, second by Counsel Cahill? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Counsel Sia?
Thank you. That area, I mean, I just have some issues with that down there, and it's not against Pete, because I always try to support the white councilors, but, and it says, you know, an auto repair two and changing the use, and, I mean, we have so many mechanic shops in the city, I mean, it's like we're being inundated with these shops, and it seems no matter what stipulations we put on them all, especially over in your area, being on the licensing board and approving the licenses and all of that, I just don't think that's the area or the neighborhood is to be putting an auto mechanic shop, especially, there's a reason why it hasn't been once for seven years.
Just let me add, Bill.
Counsel Capano?
Yeah, so what I'm trying to do with that, because there are people that are grandfathered there, you know, especially Bennett Street and Alley Street, it's a lot better than it used to be, we put no parking up and all that, I'm trying to come up with a few places, and I have a couple that I can say, this is a model place, this is the way a car repair shop should look like. So we have one on Oakville Street that rents off Nick Menino, he's a nice neat place there. We got another place in the Lynn Lumber Building, that's really nice and neat. So I'm thinking that this is gonna be one of those places, and that will make it easier for us to come down hard on some of these other places that just have cars all over the place, you know, so, you know, if he didn't abide by any of these stipulations, he would lose his license, I mean, we wouldn't renew it, you know, so that would be my intention, because I think long term, we have to address some of these places, you know, on Summer Street, Bennett Street, Alley Street, the summer East Lynn too, but I think what helps us do that is if we can have a few places that we can say, this is what a place should look like, you know, so, so years ago, if you, if you called up to have your car repaired, they might tell you, well, we're busy, bring it in next week, you know, what's happening now with a lot of these places is they don't turn anyone down, and the cars just line up all the way up and down the street. That's what I'm trying to avoid, and I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is find some responsible owners that I can point to, so when the time comes, we can point to some of these habitual offenders and say, this is what your place is gonna have to look like. And I'm hoping that this could be that type of place, and that's what I'm thinking about, you know, when I think about doing that, because I do agree with you, I know we agree on most of this stuff, you know, so that's what I'm thinking about that.
Counsel Sia, floor yours.
I can appreciate that, believe me, and Attorney Lamotta will back me on this one. I've tried to do the exact same thing, and I've got a place of business right now on a main road that I was reluctant to allow to open up, I gave them the same thing, used Flemings as an example and a couple, couple other places, you know, the way they maintain their property and the way they do their business, and we're in court now, and the place is a junkyard, and what the guy, they were using it for was, and I put it, come up with the term cannibalizing cars to dismantle them, using it as a junk shop, and it took us three years to finally shut the guy down, so I mean, we, I don't know, I just feel though that area, that location.
Could I just?
You hold your hand up for us, Counsel Lapierre.
Through the chair, could I just ask either the counselor or the proponent to let us know the hours of operation or the days of the week that they'll be in use?
Yeah, if someone could come up from the, could you come up and please tell us your hours of operation, please?
Eight to six.
Monday through Friday, is it Monday through seven?
Monday through seven.
Okay, so you're.
You have seven to five on your application.
Six in the morning, they can't stop before seven.
No, I think he said eight to six, but so what time you start, seven in the morning till five at night?
That's, that's what it says.
What is it?
Eight to, eight to six.
Okay, you're gonna start, so you're gonna do six days a week, eight in the morning till six at night? You're gonna be closed on Sunday? You all right with that? Counselor Capano?
Yeah, so what, one of the, I agree with a lot of the things that Counsel Sia is saying. One of the differences here is I think the reputation of the owner is what I, and that's what I banked on in a couple of these other places where we've been successful.
Owner of property?
The owner of the property, the owner of the property, not the tenant, but the owner of the property, I have a good relationship and good luck with him on the work that we've done so far. So that, that's what I'm hoping, I mean, it may not work, you know, but I'm expecting that it will. It's a small place anyways, you know, and it is kind of chained off, and I, like I said, what we've done in other places, you know, is we've, we've eliminated parking spots little by little, you know, trying to, you know, rein some of these other places in, we won't have that problem at this place here, especially with the stipulations, and if they don't go abide by the stipulations, you know, he won't have a license.
Counsel Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to also point out a good point from Madam Clerk made, in that we are just allowing the use at this location, and that in fact, this, the owners would have to go before the licensing commission, licensing committee to get the proper license, so there would be another opportunity for the council to, to shape the way this, this business operates. So I'm in support, and I do concur that, I do know the owner personally, and he's a good businessman, and he seems to be prideful of his tenants.
Yeah, Counsel Sia can also put on stipulations that he wants on licensing, being one of the members, so.
Come on.
Okay, so I had a motion to approve by Counsel Capano, second by Counsel Calucci.
With stipulations.
With stipulations.
With the stipulations.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett? Absent, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes. Next petition, petition of Comcast Timothy Broderick for permission to intercept existing conduit on South Common Street at Shepherd Street and place New Vault manhole, from the New Vault manhole place, one four-inch PVC conduit, 200 feet plus or minus, in an easterly direction to the property of 104 South Common.
Public hearing is now open for those wishing to speak in favor. Mr. Broderick?
Good evening, Timothy Broderick, Comcast, 9B Forbes Road in Woburn, in favor of the petition as it was read.
Okay, have a seat right there. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Here and none, the public hearing for those in favor is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Here and none, public hearing for those opposed is closed. Counselor Capano, you're a busy guy, Todd.
Could I call up Mr. Broderick, please?
Yes.
Well, what exactly are we doing here?
So we have a cable line already going down Shepherd Street that goes down to South Common and makes a left, according to the map, that goes around the corner and feeds another side street. We want to try and pick up 104 South Common Street, they've, they're requesting our service, so instead of trenching all the way down Shepherd Street, we're just gonna intercept that conduit that's already coming down onto South Common, placing a manhole over it with a splitter, we'll cut into the conduit, and then trench to the right to get to 104.
That's 200 feet?
Yes.
200 feet.
To the property, yep.
And we're gonna restore the street to its former condition, right?
Absolutely, whatever the stipulations are on the, on the permit when we get that from the DPW.
Motion to grant.
Second. Second. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Annett? Absent, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, 10 yes. And the last petition is a petition of Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, Daniel Klasnick Esquire for permission to attach, maintain, and operate small cell communications equipment on existing utility poles within the City of Lynn right of way near the following locations, 99 Essex Street, 92 Franklin Street, Fecto Way, 235 O'Callaghan Way, 8591 Harbor Street, 68 Sylvia Street, 3 Wardwell Avenue, 68 Western Avenue.
Public hearing is now open for anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, good evening, my name is Daniel Klasnick, I'm the attorney representing Verizon Wireless, I have offices at 210 Broadway, Suite 204, in Lynnville, Massachusetts, I'm here in favor of the, of the petition.
Okay, thank you, can have a seat right there in case anybody has any questions. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody speak in favor? Here and none, the public hearing for those in favor is closed. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition?
They're all good, they're all fine.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Here and none, the public hearing is closed for those in opposition. Counsel Lozey?
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to speak to Mr. Klasnick, I got a call about 10 years ago regarding the device at 68 Sylvia Street, and it was actually a complaint, and when it was first installed, is this gonna be a larger device than the one that's existing, or what is happening?
Thank you, Counselor. Basically, what Verizon Wireless is proposing to do, these are called small cell installations, they're gonna utilize the existing utility poles in the city right of way. There'll be a single antenna, and I do have some plans, and I can pass them out for each site if it's helpful, but there'll be one single individual cylindrical antenna that will be mounted to the top of the utility pole. It will be, the dimensions of that antenna are approximately 24 inches high, and it's about 15 inches in diameter. In addition to that, there will be something.
What height off the ground is it?
Well, each location is a little different, but I'm, I'm looking at the one on Harbor Street particularly, the, the antenna itself will be 37 feet, 10 inches to the top of the antenna, which will be mounted to the very top of the utility pole.
What about Sylvia Street? It's only 37 feet higher than the pole?
No, no, I apologize, no, the pole itself, this particular instance is 34 feet, so the antenna is mounted on a bracket directly on top of that, so it's the two feet over that. The one on Sylvia Street is gonna be located at a height of 37 feet, 11 inches on a 35-foot pole.
Now, I guess I'm a bit ignorant on this, I understand we've permitted antennas, cellphone antenna towers, and antennas on existing chimneys and other locations, is this something new, a new technology, or is this what's coming to this with cellphone technology?
Well, what all the carriers are facing, Councilman, is just an exponential increase in demand on their network, so what Verizon Wireless is trying to do is really a commitment to the City of Lynn. I think we can all agree that it's very important that you have the ultimate possibility for access for your citizens and businesses to good quality wireless service. I think we're all becoming completely rely upon it, we're eliminating our landlines, we're wanting to be able to go out and surf the web as we walk down the street, or, you know, in our homes. So what Verizon Wireless is continuing to do is deploy what they call macro sites, those are the ones that you had just described, on buildings, on towers. This is really intended to complement that and really target a particular area where Verizon Wireless has seen a significant growth in its wireless demand, simply that it cannot meet the capacity requirements or coverage requirements, so this is going to complement those. We'll still need those macro sites, but we're going to also need these particular types of locations to, to meet, as I said, the exponential demand that's being placed upon the networks. There's only so many calls and so much bandwidth that each site can handle. So in this particular instance, I think what Verizon Wireless is trying to do is do something that's fairly low impactful to the community by utilizing existing mon, I'm sorry, existing telephone poles, existing utility poles to deploy these small cell antenna sites. There won't be any disturbance to the ground, there won't be any equipment placed on the ground, everything is located on utility poles, Verizon Wireless entered into an agreement with National Grid, and to the extent it's a jointly owned pole with Verizon, to, to have permission to do this, and as I'm sure the council is aware, under both federal and state law, wireless service providers are entitled to nondiscriminatory access to the utility poles for this very purpose, so what we're really trying to do is show a commitment to the City of Lynn to provide you with the best possible wireless service.
Counsel Capano?
Yeah, maybe you already addressed this, and I didn't hear you, are there any of these in operation, you have any of these antennas up in the city anywhere, or around in the adjacent areas, you know, sagas, swamps, anywhere else?
The one that, thank you, Counsel.
I'm just wondering what they look like, not necessarily.
Yeah, I have a photograph actually of, of a site that was deployed actually in Amesbury. This is something that's fairly new for Verizon Wireless, but if it pleases the council, this is two photographs of an existing utility pole in the town of Amesbury, I apologize, I didn't make multiple.
What is it, this one?
Do you have any other questions, Counsel Capano, to him?
These are on utility poles. I don't know, I, I'm not for or against it, I'd like to see it, I'd just like to think about it a little bit more, I guess, you know, I, I mean, there's no rush, right?
Counsel Sia, do you have a question? Counsel Capano, you still have the floor?
Yeah, I mean, the last part of what you said about regulations being that you can do this anyways, is that, you know, without city permission, you need city permission to do this, am I right?
I'm sorry?
The city council is the permit granting authority for these type of antenna structures.
Okay, if, if, I don't know what other councils feel like, you know, maybe I'm just making a big deal about it, I just like to table it and look at it, look into it.
Counsel Cahill?
Attorney Lamotta, what is the city's standing and or ability to succeed a challenge should this be eventually, not tonight, or eventually denied as a, as a permit?
An outright denial, I fear, would open the city up to a legal challenge in attorney's fees, that the federal law encourages telecommunications facilities, and absent legitimate reasons that are proffered, that I could appear in court and present, would, present to a judge, there would be a risk of liability to the city. That being said, if the council wants to do, do diligence and research this, and actually drive to Amesbury and take a look, this is, seems to be a new technology, but an outright denial based on the record before this council tonight, I do not believe we could withstand a legal challenge.
Just one more question.
Counsel Cahill? Counselor Cahill?
Are these subject to, are these taxable products, or whatever? Are they subject to property tax?
Correct, and they are subject to property tax, recent changes in the law. I know Verizon is not typically happy, is not, has not been happy with the changes in the law, and typically does file abatements in all the communities across the state, but this would be something that Peter Carron, the assessors office, would assess a tax upon if and when they have put up.
Counselor Seer, I've been waiting patiently.
Couple things. One is that the tax that you're talking about, Verizon right now sends out a bill and charges a poll for people who have cable TV through Verizon, anywhere from five to seven, as much as $12 a household, depending on, you know, the expense of what it is for their cable. And I also think that what Verizon is doing is, which is kind of smart for Verizon, looking for a way to save money, instead of putting these on buildings that they've been paying rent on, and where we've been given permission in the past to do that, I think it would be maybe in Verizon's best interest if they took that tax off, the people of Lynn that they're charging, you know, it would kind of help me to think, yeah, maybe I might be in favor of this, so...
Counselor Seer, maybe you could add a stipulation to it that you wanted to charge?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't, you know, I understand what Verizon is trying to do, make as much money as they can, about trying to provide as much service to the city of Lynn, I mean, okay, that's a great argument, but it's bull. So, I don't know, I just think that we ought to table this and really take a look at it.
Second.
I know Counselor Walsh had a question.
I'm sorry, I just have one question for the gentleman from Verizon. I mean, these are exclusively only to Verizon users that'll be able to use these cell towers?
Just to clarify, this is Verizon Wireless, not Verizon, but yes, these are specific for utilizing the Verizon Wireless licensed FCC frequencies. So it would be exclusively for Verizon Wireless customers.
So, I mean, my guess is that as the technology catches on, all the providers are going to want to put them on the poles, too, so this is going to be something we're going to be challenged with moving forward, so something just to think about with it.
Okay.
There was a motion to table, second, non-debatable.
Non-debatable, yeah. That's it. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net Absinthe?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
So just as a point of...
That concludes the public hearings, we have one public hearing to set down.
May I ask a question?
The public hearing is closed.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Public hearing to be set down, petition of Solutions Auto Body, Pablo De La Cruz for permission for an auto body shop at 606 Boston Street.
Can I just ask, before we do set it down?
Counselor Seer.
What the window location is?
606?
606 Boston Street Rare.
It's right next to Barry Park.
It's right next to Barry Park, okay. Counselor Walsh?
Maranoto, repair used to be.
Just to put down for a public hearing.
This is set down.
Have you guys ever been in there and seen the mess they make?
Okay, motion, second.
Motion, set it down.
Set it down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business. We have the ordinance committee meeting of February 9th, an ordinance regulating the procurement of electrical supply services in the city of Lynn to be adopted permanently.
unanimous vote by the committee making motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Calucci. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net Absinthe?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
So that was for both carnivals.
Yeah, that was for both carnivals. Committee reports, ordinance and rules, we have a motion to set down a public hearing for an ordinance amending the zone ordinance relative to graffiti in the city of Lynn.
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net Absinthe?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
So that was for both carnivals.
Yeah, that was for both carnivals. Committee reports, ordinance and rules, we have a motion to set down a public hearing for an ordinance amending the zone ordinance relative to graffiti in the city of Lynn.
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer? Yes. Yes. Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net Absinthe?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Personnel committee.
Counselor Lapia?
We approve two positions through the personnel committee this evening. Motion approved.
Second by Counselor Calucci.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net Absinthe?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Ways and means.
Ways and means.
I have several orders, if there is no objection, could I have a motion to take them all at once?
I'll make the motion.
Ways and means. Order that the city controller take the following actions, transfer the sum of $9,324.53 from the insurance over 20K account to the Lynn Police Department vehicles account, transfer the sum of $3,000.01 from the parking payroll account to the settlement account, certify as an available fund the amount of $194,519.69 as allotted to the city of Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the fiscal year 16 Shannon Community Safe Initiative Grant, certify as an available fund the amount of $63,750.01 as allotted to the city of Lynn Health Department by the Department of Public Health for the fiscal year 16 Strategic Prevention Framework, and order that the solicitors' office draft and forward a letter on behalf of the Lynn City Council to honorable Governor Charles Baker, Secretary of Transportation Stephanie Pollack, and General Manager of the Mass Bay Transportation Authority Frank DePauler in support of the continued operation of the Lynn commuter ferry.
Counselor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapia?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Net Absinthe?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Licensing committee.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous vote of committee, recommend to accept.
Second.
Public property and parks committee, we have ordered to authorize the Inspection Services Department and City Solicitors' Office to draft a request or proposals for the lease and development of the Neptune Boulevard real property vacant land, and to advertise the same in the Central Register and any other applicable publishings, and they've requested an emergency on that.
Motion to approve with the emergency.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes.[1636.36]